December 10th, 2018, meeting of the Marquette City Commission to order. If you will join us in repeating the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Stonehouse?
Here.
I have a series of announcements. I have one announcement on the vacancies that we have on various city boards and commissions. You are correct. I stand corrected again. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an agenda in front of you. If I may have a motion for approval, please. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
And Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any further comments? Commissioner Frazier? No. Commissioner Reynolds?
None.
Any other commissioner? Hearing none? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Now I get to make my announcements. We have four openings in the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have two in the Board of Review. We have two in the Brownfield Authority. We have one in the Downtown Development Authority. Four in the Harbor Advisory Committee. One in Housing Commission. Two in Investment Advisory Board. Three in the Local Development Finance Authority. Two in the Local Officers Compensation Commission. One in the Marquette County Transit Authority. One for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And one for the Planning Commission. The instructions of how to apply for these openings are available online. I would encourage all citizens to please consider the value that you can be to your city by serving on one of these boards. We do indeed need your help and assistance. That brings us to public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments, and if you wish to reserve time on a further agenda item, please so state. Public comments. Anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Frank F. Farrell, 350 East Ridge Marquette, these are my opinions. November 26 regarding the Marina, Mr. Campana wisely asked why the state no longer pays 50 percent. Mr. Swenson said there was a transcription error during the state legislative process. He made this 1.8 percent error out to be minor. It's $40,032, though. Small against the cost of Marina, but major against our strained budget. Please find out why. Have the state pay. Mr. Campana also said we don't have the money we used to. We ought to unless this board lied over the past 21 years about the revenue all this development was to bring us. What happened, or better worded, what hasn't? Why doesn't an item on marijuana appear on this light agenda? That's the biggest money-making opportunity we've seen in my 26 years here. October 29, Mr. Frazier asked me to address items this board is working on. I just commented on Hartwood, which he seemed to ignore. October 9, he claimed our lake shore is undeveloped from Oradok to Oradok, not accounting for three homes, a private club, a boat repair shop, two obsolete power plants, a Coast Guard station that consumed an acre of our lakefront, and his own yachtyard. November 26, this board kindly informed us that the banded trees at Lighthouse Park are not slated for destruction. They were banded after historic preservationists dictated that we keep two insignificant structures on the property where we'd hoped to run the trail. Oddly, they deemed these structures more worthy of preservation than trees that are as historic, if not more so. Our planner told me the trees were threatened due to topographic issues, but there's space if the three-legged tower is relocated. Management seems to have realized this, which begs the question as to why they were banded to begin with, much less why they remain banded two weeks later. The largest, most gorgeous trees on the property, no less. These old growth trees are worthy of preservation. We also need to reevaluate the need to keep these structures and the captain's house as well. Most anyone who sees the banded trees will be concerned regardless of whether they speak here. This board routinely upsets the public over nothing. Please act more cognizant of our obvious public sentiments so we may remain focused on the matters at hand. Please remove those bands. Upsetting is our manager using this as an excuse for breaking his promise to remove that awful chain-link fence by the time the snow flew. After the meeting, Mr. Schlegel told me the fence wasn't removed because the rest of the park isn't ready. Having spent hundreds of hours in the immediate vicinity over 26 years, I can't imagine how this isn't a load of bull. The park would be more useful without the fence regardless of whether the trail is run first, as detailed on record at least twice. As is, only the southwest corner is of practical use. Very scenic, but only a fraction of our park. This board is reminded again to fathom how patiently we've waited instead of piling yet more insult to injury.
Would anyone else desire to make public comment? Anyone else public comment? If not, public comment is closed. That brings us then to a presentation this evening. Upper Peninsula Health System Update by the Chief Executive Officer, Brian Sinott. Mr. Sinott, if you could come forward and provide the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be back here. And it's very good to be able to share some updates with all of you. A common question I've had over the last few years has been, what's the update on the new hospital? And then that was quickly always followed by, so what are you going to do with the existing hospital? And it feels very good to give you an update on both of those this evening. So first with the new hospital, you'll see right now the exterior is really starting to take shape pretty quickly. You know, we're getting exterior signage up. Everything is really starting to take shape from the exterior. And on the inside, we've got a lot of major imaging modalities in finalizing our operating rooms, our cath labs, all the technology that's going to be put inside the hospital is now arriving, if not here, over the next 45 days or so. So it's exciting to really see this come together. We've got a number of departments already that are basically done and ready to go. They look great. This facility is designed to make it so much more efficient for patients to wayfind, to get the care that they need. And so it's really, really fun to see that come together. We are expecting to have a certificate of occupancy the early part of next year. We're targeting March 1st is when we're expecting that. That can move a little bit just depending on the state surveys and finalizing our construction, things like that. But then we are looking at moving in towards the middle of April. Do allow a little bit of latitude there. We are going to be conducting some tests of all the different equipment and systems that need to be up and running, training our teams to make sure that when we do go live day one, everything is as seamless as possible. And so we are going to be going through that. So that may move a little bit, but nothing of concern. It wouldn't really be dictated by, there are some construction delays just as we finalize things, or maybe some equipment doesn't come in on time and we need to get that certified. There might be a couple of weeks there where it may move. But we're looking at the middle to the latter part of April is when we'll make the move. And we'll determine that by the end of February, most likely. So we're very excited about that. There's upwards of 350 to 400 people there a day, and they're making a ton of progress every day now, which is really, really exciting for our teams to see. Internally now, our teams are essentially running, are beginning to plan for, running two hospitals. We've got our day-to-day operations and patient care activities ongoing right now, but then we're also really planning for what it's going to be like to run the new hospital. Two very different places from an operations perspective. And so we have the virtual hospital and thinking through our new processes, the new operational workflows, how things are going to function and work, and then now starting to train our teams on how things should work in the new organization. Very fun to see. People are energized by it. There's a lot of work going on. I'm very proud of the teams for all of the activities that have us so well-prepared for this move. And so an exciting time for us to be moving into our new home, the early part of next year. So certainly more to come on that as they're available, more details. But I was asked to come here tonight not only to give a quick update on the new hospital, but to talk about our current home. The question that I wasn't able to escape the last few years when talking about the new hospital is always chased with, well, what about the current hospital site? And what's going to be going on there? And so I'm really excited to be able to talk a little bit more about that tonight. We've worked very closely with a number of different folks over the last year in taking a look at what is the right thing for this community, incorporating a multitude of different interests and feedback that we got. There was some pretty interesting plans that were put forth, but I can share with you all, none were as comprehensive, as thorough, as visionary as what I'm about to be able to share with, that the Veridia Group put forth. We were very excited to make that announcement last week. That was one that, from our perspective, and we run hospitals and healthcare, we're not developers. And so I'm not the one you would want saying, oh, yeah, that's an amazing idea, that's a great plan. That's not where we come in. But having seen some of the others and realizing how difficult it would be to quickly transform, you know, 21-plus acres, it's no small undertaking. And I could certainly tell that under Bob Mahaney's leadership with Veridia and his really impressive team, they put forth a lot of energy, a lot of thinking around this, and it's really impressive. And so I'm excited for our community and what's going to be going on, not only as we move into our new home, but now what's going to happen with that existing home. Now we've finally got an answer, or some answers, to that question that I've been getting the last couple of years. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Bob Mahaney to share kind of a high-level overview with this group around what the thinking is for this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, people in the audience, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We're excited to be here. As Mr. Sinott alluded to, this has been two years in the making. We first broached this idea, really, at least internally, when we heard that LifePoint was going to build the new healthcare facility. And as they took steps in that direction, frankly, we started to think about, well, what's going to happen to the old campus? And like many in the community, we were really concerned about all 21-plus acres sitting there vacant and, you know, functionally obsolete buildings. And over the course of, you know, at first we thought, well, geez, that's a big project. Good luck to whoever's going to be doing that. Who'd be crazy enough to do that? I guess, call me crazy. We spent over two years working with LifePoint. LifePoint engaged, many of you know Scott Evans and the Realty Trust group out of Atlanta, one of the top-flight healthcare real estate advisory firms in the country. And we began working with Scott and his team on a number of the challenges and how we could overcome those on this site. LifePoint set out an RFP nationwide. We participated in that process. That process went on for quite some time. And what it allowed us to do was to start working more closely with the LifePoint team. And I have to give them some credit. They were willing to, there were easier transactions they could have done than the transaction they did with Veridia Group, because we put some pretty, we put some pretty high bars into our agreement that they need to deliver on. And if they weren't concerned about the community, they would have just taken the highest price. I'm pretty confident saying we were not the highest price, even though it's overpriced. Got to get that in there. So, you know, we took trips down to Nashville, and there was one question that kept coming up from the leadership in Nashville was, or the one comment that I heard on a recurring basis was, whoever we choose has to do what's in the best interest for this community, because we need to do business in this community. We intend to do business in this community for a long time. As a community member, I was very pleased to hear that, regardless of whether or not we were the, you know, the ones that ended up with this property. That was good to hear, and I think that I would be remiss not to point that out to you. So what I'm going to share with you is a result of two years roughly of planning, discussion, study, research, et cetera. And to give us context, we, our staff put together this little Google map, and the red lines delineate all of the properties that are included in this acquisition. I think we have, oh, thank you, Michelle.
There's more.
Wait, there's more.
It just can't all fit.
Yeah, we can't quite get it all in there. Oh, wait. What if I do this?
And you see your day with technology.
Look at me.
Okay, yeah.
This is a rare event.
It's true.
All right. I'm going to start with that, and we can get bigger later. But that shows you the whole campus. To give you some context here, what's covered in the purchase agreement is 21-plus acres, which is roughly six city blocks, square blocks. In addition, there's, in that 21 acres, there's 14 separate medical facilities. There's almost 900,000 square feet of medical space, medical facility space. There's 12 single-family homes and 11 vacant city lots on the periphery of the campus, which is, does my cursor show up? When we talk about the periphery, I'm going to try that again, periphery properties, we're talking about these outlined properties that Marquette General had acquired over the years in the surrounding residential neighborhoods in anticipation of, you know, some future expansion. So those are included in this transaction. Our plan, let me talk a little bit about our plan for the property and where we're at. And I want to preface what I say by emphasizing that our plans are very conceptual and very preliminary, preliminary at this time. We have a lot of due diligence left to do. A lot of, you know, deep diving into the facilities, into the infrastructure, into the potential uses and how they'll interface. We've been interviewing architects over the last couple of weeks in regards to working with us on developing the master site plan for this campus. And I'll share with you that we're really, really pleased with the response we got to our RFP there. We have some of the top firms in the nation that have expressed interest in this project. So we're really excited to see what they come back with and what direction that takes. Our plans call for the reuse of three buildings, four if you include the parking garage, and the demolition of the remaining medical care facilities. So in other words, our plan calls for the demolition of much of the core campus here, the central campus, if you can follow my cursor. The retention and the renovation of the Knellberg Building into office, primarily office building, some medical clinics. LifePoint will be leasing some space in there, so we will have activity in there and some occupancy on day one, and we think that's going to be very helpful to driving, to attracting more tenants and businesses to the area. The parking garage over here requires some extensive repairs in order to get it back to top-notch shape. And then right here is what we call the Bridge Building. We'll also be retaining that. And if we go down here to the ER, the Trauma Center, we'll also be retaining that building. So roughly 500,000 square feet of existing space needs to be demolished before we can start any construction or adding any value in this area. The campus itself, I think many of you are aware of this, if you've tromped through the halls of Marquette General over the years, you know, most of those buildings were built on kind of what we call in the development business, at least a one-off basis. You know, they weren't designed with a long-term master plan, correct, Brian?
Agreed.
Agreed. And they make a really good maze, but they're pretty much, once you eliminate their use as for healthcare, they're basically functionally obsolete. They were built for a specific use. Many of them are very old. Some of them are over 100 years old, if you think back to St. Luke's Hospital. And it's just cost prohibitive to try to redeploy those into any other use at this time. Hence our decision to demolish those. Our development plan takes into account the surrounding neighborhoods. That was really the starting point for our conceptual plans as exist today. As we all know, we've got a very strong and historic residential neighborhood to the south of this campus, also some residential on the east side of the campus towards Presque Isle, and then over on the west, of course, along Seventh. And then on the north side, our boundary is Northern Michigan University, and more specifically the University Center, right up here, which is undergoing an extensive renovation. And then we have the Cohodas Building and all the administrative offices just off this map to the northeast. So what we try to do in our plan at this point in time, our conceptual plans, and this is all before our architects weigh in, is to concentrate the commercial use and the denser uses in the northern perimeter of the property. And then as we go south, shift towards residential. And the residential component, the densest parts of residential, you know, the multifamily residential would be in this area. And then as we go south of Magnetic, go into less dense townhouse, carriage home-type housing. And we think that what that does then is it creates a nice, natural transition and buffer for the folks down here as you head north and get towards the commercial uses. Just quickly, some of the other things in our plan that we're kicking around is a pedestrian-centric retail block, hotel. I mentioned the residential and also some senior living facilities. With respect to the single-family homes, what we want to do is get those back out on the market and get them back into the ownership of individual families, residents in the community. And we're right now going through each home and looking at it to evaluate its condition. What we want to do is try to, some of these houses need some significant work done on them. And what we will probably do is try to, we'll do that work ourselves and then put them on the market. We really want these to be complementary to the surrounding neighborhood and get them up in top-notch condition and then put them on the market. And then we'll be doing the same with the vacant city lots, the 11 vacant lots that we have. We'll be putting those on the market, or we might do some development of those, residential-type development, and then put them on the market. The plan right now, the city administration tells me that we're compliant with current zoning. I should mention that a lot of our, a lot of our current ideas for this plan are the result of consultation and conversations with a lot of the city leadership, ranging from just community thought leaders to individual citizens to some of the residents in this area, obviously Northern Michigan University leadership and city administration. Let me, I'll quickly talk a little bit about our timeline. Under the purchase agreement with LifePoint, it looks like we would close probably in June, July. There will be a transition, as Mr. Sinott mentioned, where they effectively have to run to two hospitals for a while and moves, they'll be moving folks over to the new hospital in phases. So we have to accommodate their ongoing use even after the new hospital opens. So we close in June or July. Our hope is to immediately start the renovations of Knellberg. We will probably gut Knellberg in its entirety when all is said and done. It'll be a very major undertaking. There's 230,000 square feet alone in the Knellberg Building, and it's going to be an exciting opportunity. We'll also do renovations on the Bridge Building. We might, hopefully if things go well, we'll have our funding in place to immediately start on the demolition of the old healthcare facilities in the center of the campus. And while that's going on, we are considering starting the residential redevelopment down here in the surface parking lot south of McClellan. The biggest challenge in this project is frankly going to be finding the funding for the demolition costs. This project, this project has great potential. By our estimates, there will be $150 million of investment here on this campus, based on our latest plans and forecasts. If that's the case, it, this will probably be the largest private-sector-led community development in the history of the U.P. I share that with you because I want you to have some context for the undertaking as well as for the importance of getting this demolition funded, and that's going to be the key challenge. And these types of projects typically, you know, there's various programs through MEDC and the state and local level, and, you know, and of course, Brownfield is something that, you know, comes into play here. And we've had conversations with the Brownfield Authority about this project. They've been supportive of our plans. But that's really going to be the key to this driving forward, and especially moving this forward in a pretty rapid pace. We would like to get this redevelopment going as soon as possible. I should mention that part of our strategy in terms of how we, if you will, how you skin this cat when you're dealing with 21 acres, what we've done is broken this down into separate, distinct, manageable projects, all of which can happen either at the same time or independent of each other. That lends a lot of flexibility to our plans on a lot of levels. And, but the one, but the one hurdle that they all face, with the exception of Knellberg and the Bridge Building, is getting this demolition done. So that's going to be a lot of our focus over the next six months. We've had conversations with MEDC. They've been supportive. So we're looking forward to continuing those discussions with all of the public agencies that might play a role in this. And perhaps this is a good time to just open up to any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Frazier?
Since you call yourself crazy, you're moving into deal with crazy building, you know that, don't you? But are you giving them a good deal? Maybe you could work out a deal with them and say, you could help them, they can do all the moving for you in exchange for reducing their rent during the process, maybe, but I think it's a good plan, you have great ideas, and look forward to your long-term plan. The hospital thing is going to be difficult, you know, running two hospitals for a while, but hopefully you and them can work it out and think it looks great. So look forward to a great process.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Schlegel?
Can't tell you how excited I am about this. See this whole thing, work through the process. Thank you, Brian, and your crew for everything that you've done with the hospital, keeping it here in Marquette, what it's doing for its residents, and taking care of the fellow U.P.'s in our community. Equally, Mr. Mahaney, this is a humongous undertaking, and I'm really excited to watch this process. My, I like what I'm hearing. One of the things that I've always been kind of concerned about, and I'm glad that you, it seems like you did a nice job with it, and I just want to back it up a little bit more with the periphery properties on these surrounding lots, whether or not you build on them or like the single, the single lots that are off of, I believe it's Park or Magnetic, where the other parking lots may have been those individual ones that are owned by, that will be owned by you. But those would go back to single-family dwellings. I'm assuming that's what you were saying there. You want to try and keep those with single-family homes on those individual lots. There was about 10 to 15 of them up there, roughly. That was something that when we had the first meeting with the community, that was very vocalized, very much vocalized, where we want to see some of those tax dollars come back with the single-family dwelling. It's great that you're going to do so. It's great that you're going to do some other multifamily or townhouses, that's great. It's just, that is the intent for some of those utter periphery lots, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
That really excites me. Thanks a lot for doing that, for keeping that in mind. And I would imagine that a lot of the expenses that you're talking about with demolition and that's going to have to do with some of the abatement and whatnot that comes with the old buildings, the 100-year-old.
Yeah.
And whatnot.
And we're still, we're still working to get our arms around that. When LifePoint acquired the property from M G H., they had, you know, Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmentals done, but you know, that was five, six years ago, and we need to get, we're getting those updated as we speak. You know, we know, for example, there's five underground storage tanks on the premises, you know, they have the huge steam plant and boiler plant, and you can just imagine, you know, with some facilities being 100-plus years old, you know, there's, we know there's asbestos, we know there's lead paint and the light. So that will be, that will be a big part of the cost component, probably a couple million dollars.
I can imagine. And it was the same with the orphanage, it was a big concern with how much was coming out of there, were they going to have to tarp it, what's going to happen with the homes right around there, keeping things as safe as possible for the current, for the tenants that are living around there. So I know it's going to be, you know, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but that's the stuff that we get the phone calls on all the time, oh, they're going to be blowing dust up my, on my house and I'm going to get cancer, you know?
Yeah.
And you know, people are, we would just want to be as transparent, as, you know, informed and everything, the safety that's going into it, and you know, obviously that's going to realize, and it's going to let the people say, that's why it's costing so much, because we're doing this the right way. So, but those are just some of the things that I'm really excited to see take place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Reynolds.
I don't have any questions per se, I just wanted to thank you both for coming. And since Friday, since this announcement was made, I've run into a lot of people over the weekend doing events and things, and there was a lot of positive feedback from residents that you and your group were spearheading this. So I just wanted to pass that along to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campana.
Yes, Bob, this is exciting. It's exciting for the community. You know, we have to thank Duke LifePoint for seeking a quick reuse of the hospital, and we have to thank Veridia for undertaking this because it's a huge project, we know that you can do it. And the community is going to benefit because you're going to have a development that basically will integrate well with the rest of the community. So I can't think of a better use than what you proposed, and yes, people are excited, and I think they're going to be very happy with this. So we're glad you're doing it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Dave.
Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, and this is a very interesting and exciting time, and I think setting the guiding principles at this early stage of what we hope to achieve as a community with this incredible redevelopment is important, and affordable housing is certainly a really huge concern in this community. And so I want to, I wonder if you could state, as a, I understand this is all conceptual, but do you have a sense of how that could be carried forward?
We think that there's an opportunity in the marketplace for a housing price point that's tough to find in Marquette right now. And I think that's the best way I can answer that right now, is that we are looking at a variety of housing, what's the word I should use, Michelle, housing types, housing price points. We have talked about, in fact, Michelle has really spearheaded it, you know, she keeps hammering home to me, you know, let's find that price point. I'm not going to quote any numbers or anything right now because...
It's very early, I understand.
Yeah, but I hear you, and we would love to be able to, to, you know, provide folks that opportunity for that first-time homeownership at the right price.
Great, really glad to hear that. And then I was curious on the master plan process, do you have a date in mind for that? Because that sounds like it's going to be pretty fast-tracked, or is that's moving along? Because that, again, setting those guiding principles on what's going to be going on in the space.
Well, our master plan process will be largely dictated by due diligence, findings, a lot of legal work. To give you context, there's 35 separate legal parcels here, 30-plus. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of trains going down parallel tracks all at once, which makes it hard to answer a very simple question. But we hope to have our, you know, master plan completed by, I would say, sometime in the spring.
Wow.
Yeah. We feel very, we feel very strongly that we need to move, and a master plan can be flexible. That's the whole, I didn't say that in my comments, but one of the features of our plan is we wanted to have maximum flexibility. What if, for example, we find out that this, we can provide affordable housing at the right price point, you know, and there's the demand? Well, let's expand that component geographically beyond what we first put in the plan. And maybe it's the senior living side of things. So we've got a lot of flexibility in the plan. We will learn a lot as we go on, the market will tell us a lot, the community will tell us a lot. But the one thing that we feel very strongly about is we've got to get those buildings down ASAP. You know, we, when we developed, when we bought the bakery, the old bunny bread, and those buildings sat there and they sat there, I mean, they had holes in the roof. It was the largest population of pigeons maybe in the country. And it was just, it was just terrible, and there was, there were kids in there studying, you know, trying to light the building on fire. And actually, there were two, I think there were two separate fires that went, that occurred in that building. As soon as we knocked that building down, people's perception of that area changed. And I think that's going to be the same thing here. As soon as we get these out of the way and we start, you know, it's going to accelerate development across the board, it's going to eliminate a potential life safety hazard for this community, and we go from there. So we're really, really focused on, we've got to get this demolition done, along with getting the master plan done.
And could, understanding, again, this is all conceptual, providing, I'm not familiar with all the buildings by name, would it be possible to get drawings of things just so we could understand? I don't know which building is the Nellburg Building, if we could have that, just some sense of where those things are, I think that would help people understand. And, let's see, oh, and then my last, in terms of the demo, is this material planned to go to the Marquette County landfill? Is that all been decided, and how, any sense of what that, any comments on that side of it? Like, where is this going to go? Is that a benefit to the landfill? I don't, we, we just had a big presentation on the recycling last week and, that a bunch of us went to, and the landfill's a very important asset. So understanding what it, what it may gain from this is important to understand.
Right, and I can understand your concern there. It's a good question. Typically, what happens is, we will get demolition quotes from a number of people that, you know, demolition has become a trade in and of itself these days, very specialized because of the, because of the, you know, desire to try to recycle as much as you can and reuse materials. I'm pretty confident that a lot of the material will be reused, it's, there's value in it. One of the challenges that we found in the past in trying to, for example, trying to do a Leeds, a lead building in Marquette is a real challenge because you're supposed to take your waste material and get it to a facility that'll repurpose it, but they're geographically, they're so far away, it's cost prohibitive. So I'm pretty confident we're going to have that challenge. But having said that, my sense is there's a lot of material in those buildings that can be reused.
Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Smith.
Just wanted to say thank you for coming. I think it's going to be really interesting to see how the look and feel of that neighborhood changes, and I was glad to see that you've kind of segregated out the north and the middle and the south. You put a lot of thought into this, and it shows. Looking forward to seeing some designs and mockups in the future. And I really appreciate you coming here tonight. I mean, I wasn't on the commission when all of this started, I don't, I don't think it's required for you to be here, so I appreciate you communicating with the city commission ahead of time and being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? If not, Ms. Mahaney and Mr. Sinott, thank you very much for appearing to the commission and giving us the briefs that you have. I think this was very important for the community to hear it directly from the people involved and to be able to get it without going through filters, if that makes sense. I think that, you know, the new hospital is just incredible, just watching it go through and the couple of chances we've had to go in and look at it. I don't want to say I look forward to hospitalization, but I guess if it has to be, it's a good place I'd like to be. And certainly, you know, the old hospital has always been the big elephant in the room for the last couple of years of what's going to happen to that. And I think the plan that you have brought forward is innovative, I think it's transformational. I love the way that it really links the university better with Third Street, and the way that that can in turn lead to university linkage now further downtown. And I think it accomplishes, accomplishes those things, perhaps even without thinking about it, but simply by going through and doing what you're doing, what you're planning to do. I would ask everybody to understand that this is kind of like day one of a very long journey, because the plans is put together by Veridia, we'll have to go through the planning commission step by step, so there will be plenty of opportunity for public input to those plans and public comment. There'll be plenty of opportunity to see them as they move through that process, and we are a long way from that, in spite of the fact we want to be there tomorrow, we know it's going to take time. I would also call your attention to the alternative, which is what would happen if we didn't do anything? And you have this huge, white, abandoned building sitting in the center of Marquette, you know, certainly intolerable for a lot of reasons. So when you look at this opportunity, it really is remarkable that we're able to take that negative, I think, and make it into an extraordinarily strong positive. So I look forward to seeing the progress being done and to seeing it all happen. And thank you again for coming and sharing your thoughts and plans with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, the next item up is a public hearing, and that's for consideration of a new Class C liquor license for the Crappy Coffee Roasting LLC. And I think the way we begin that is to have the Madam Clerk read the document, and then we'll move into a public hearing following.
Thank you, Mayor Background. At the August 13, 2018, regular meeting, the city commission adopted a resolution approving an application for a downtown redevelopment liquor license to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission by Crappy Coffee Roasting LLC. The city has received notification that the application was approved on November 14, 2018, for a new on-premise Class C liquor license at 401 North Third Street, DBA The Crib. The application has received approval from relevant city departments, and the city commission scheduled this public hearing at the November 26, 2018 meeting. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve a new on-premise Class C liquor license for Crappy Coffee Roasting LLC. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
I will declare the public hearing open. If any citizen has any questions for or comments relating to the public hearing, now is the time to speak them. Any questions, any comments, any concerns? This is the opportunity now for public input to this particular agenda item. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Smith.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a new on-premises Class C liquor license for Crappy Coffee Roasting LLC.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Smith, any further comments?
It's a great establishment, I look forward to seeing what they do with a liquor license.
Commissioner Campana.
This is a pretty routine request. It will benefit the establishment, I've been in it, it's a very first-class establishment. I do have one question. When we say Class C liquor, does that mean beer, wine, and liquor? Who knows this? What's a Class C license? Beer, wine, and liquor, I believe, correct?
I do not know, I will direct that to the...
I was looking it up today, and it did say that. This is basically the same as a bar, is what it looked like to me in my preliminary reading of this.
Okay.
I mean, it's not important, but it's nice to know it's going to be there. I know that you can have beer and wine places, or you can have beer, wine, and liquor. So, it's not important, it's not going to hold it up, I've just, obviously we'll let it go.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Smith.
I found the answer, if you'd like to hear it, from the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. A Class C license is a place, licenses sell at retail beer, wine, mixed spirit drink, and spirits for consumption on the premises.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any further comments from a commissioner? Hearing none, this will be a roll-call vote. Madam Clerk, if you will conduct the roll-call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. The vote passes 7-0. Next item up is our consent agenda. I will need a motion to accept, Commissioner Reynolds.
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second please, Commissioner Schlegel.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Reynolds, any further comments?
The only question, I did have one question, and I just wanted to point it out because it seemed like a good deal on item 3C, so I wanted to ask Todd why the difference in the price between the $7,500, I think it was, and the $13,000?
Commissioner, thank you for your question. The deal that we're getting is through White Rock Security, which is our current vendor for our antivirus software, which is E-SAT. And so we contacted them first, it's time to renew, and we contacted them and discussed, you know, other viable options. And so we gave them the first opportunity to quote this software that we're looking at, the Sentinel One. And Sentinel One, and other companies do this as well, other vendors, but what Sentinel One does is as soon as there's a quote presented for a specific company, they lock that pricing down. And so any other company that attempts to quote for the same business gets basically MSRP, or manufactured pricing. And so White Rock Security was able to get quite a better deal than the other companies that then had an opportunity to bid after the fact. We're very pleased, actually, because we've been pleased with White Rock Security up to this point anyway, so in our opinion, it's worked out for the best.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, this will be a roll-call because we do have a state of the, a state right-of-way permit within the consent agenda, so it will necessitate a roll-call vote. Madam Clerk, if you will conduct the roll-call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse.
Yes. That brings us to unfinished business, particularly this tower, shared tower arrangement with Northern Michigan University. Madam Clerk, if you could read the document.
Thank you, sir. Background, since September 8, 2009, Northern Michigan University and the city have maintained a fiber-optic project agreement that facilitated the share use of NMU and city infrastructure. NMU and the city now desire to terminate the existing fiber-optic project agreement and its April 2010 amendment to enter into a new reciprocal agreement to permit a one-for-one trade of tower locations, enabling continued use of each party's transmitter systems. Under the proposed agreement, NMU will lease to the city space on its Mount Marquette Menard Tower to support the city's VHF transmitter/receiver antenna and associated communications equipment for the fire department's radios. In return, the city will lease to NMU space on its mountain tank water storage facility to support NMU's LTE transmitter, three antennas, and associated communications equipment for its wireless education network. The city will also allow NMU to use its mountain tank lateral to attach fiber from the market board of light and power to the fiber ring. In exchange for use of the city's lateral, NMU agrees to upgrade the city-owned poles at this location at NMU's cost, with poles to be installed, owned, and maintained by the MBLP. NMU may attach fiber to these poles pursuant to a separate pole attachment agreement executed between NMU and the MBLP. In addition, NMU was granted a zoning permit to install, operate, and maintain emergency power generation equipment at the mountain tank site to act as a back, as backup power for NMU's wireless education network. tank site to act as backup power for NMU's wireless education network. In exchange, NMU agrees to connect city utility operations at the mountain tank site to the emergency power generation equipment to act as an emergency power source. NMU shall be solely responsible for installing by use of qualified contractors operating, maintaining, and ensuring the emergency power generation equipment. The term of the proposed agreement is for 15 years. However, after the first 10 years, this agreement may be terminated by either party providing 60 days' written notice to the other party. The proposed shared tower agreement was introduced at the commission's November 26th, 2018 meeting and approved as recommended to move the lease agreement forward to the December 10th, 2018 meeting. Fiscal effect, none. This agreement between the city and NMU is a one-for-one trade of tower use without monetary consideration by either party for such use. Additionally, in lieu of monetary rent for use by NMU of the mountain tank lateral and for allowing NMU to place a generator on city property, NMU will bear the cost of installing new poles to replace aging city infrastructure and will connect to city's utilities at mountain tank to the generator. Recommendation: Approve the shared tower lease agreement with Northern Michigan University and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Campana?
I would move that we approve the shared tower lease agreement with Northern Michigan University and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
I need a second. Any seconds? Commissioner Frazier?
Say it.
Commissioner Campana, any further comments?
This seems like a varied agreement between Northern, the city, and BLP, and it's not going to cost the city anything, and it's going to benefit all three entities, and I don't see how we can go wrong on it.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank Commissioner Campana. It's a benefit to everybody and keep the city technology lively.
Any other commissioners? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. That brings us down to public comments. Second public comment period. As a reminder, comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone desiring to address the commission? Anyone desiring to address the commission?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. And I'm here to talk about our favorite subject this time of year, which is snow shoveling. We have a new, to me, ordinance that says that the landowner is responsible for shoveling the sidewalk in front of their dwelling. And I'm out there with the scoop, trying to make sure enough of our sidewalk is cleared that we don't get ticketed. And yet, on my block, there's like three landowners who are shoveling the sidewalk and the rest who are not. And we've never had the city's snowplow, excuse me, the sidewalk snowplow come down our side of Magnetic Street. So I'm asking during Commissioner Comment for a little bit of clarification on this. Are we going to get a ticket if we don't shovel the sidewalk? Because we typically shovel the front steps out to the driveway and make sure there's enough sidewalk so the mailman and the paper boy can get in. But there's some genuine confusion, especially in our block, and there are some people who are going above and aboard to clear off every part of their sidewalk. And we're trying to be good people about this and good citizens, but what is the purpose of the ordinance, and what are you really looking for, and what do we, what do you have to do to get a ticket, I guess is my bottom line? What do you have to do to get a ticket to violate the snow shoveling ordinance? Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Brian Miller. I'm at 225 Sandstone. I just had some quick questions on the development. I think it's super exciting. But I was wondering, what portion of that would go through Brownfield, and what portion would the city see taxable property income? Would that come out fairly immediately when that stuff started going into process? Or is it so brand-new that we really don't know the answer to that yet? But that's basically it. I just wanted a little bit more info.
Thank you, Verto. These are my opinions. After our November 26th meeting, Mr. Schlegel acted disgruntled toward me for suggesting this board cares little about people with disabilities. I'd said, quote, "No one in power around here uses a wheelchair," which explains why members seldom address their needs or even give a wheelchair user a single vote for the open seat he ran for. He overreacted to this statement. I respect his personal, understandable sensitivity for wheelchair users, which I share. My assertion was not aimed at any member personally, but appears to stand true through the inactions of this board, even according to at least one wheelchair user. Mr. Schlegel is asked to recognize that he's a newer member on a board that's historically shown little sensitivity. That nary a member publicly addressed the concern over four missing sidewalk squares at 340 East Ridge bolsters my assertion. At that point, the board took ownership of the problem. Prior to that, I didn't expect any member to be aware of the public impediment. Of course, I blame this board anyway for the same reason I blame Mr. Campana for ruining South Beach Park, even though that allegation applied more to our manager. This board is responsible for anything City Hall neglects to handle. The facts remain that I feel lied to and exercised extreme patience in trying to work with City Hall to replace those squares for months. Give the owner of 340 East Ridge ample time to repair his damage to our property, let's say through the end of September 2018. Oops, that was over two months ago. This owner's selfish incognizance of the public needed to be settled by then with a warning that beyond a certain date, he'd be fined by the day. He had to have noticed those wheelchairs. Of course, with his family name, he lives by different rules. Once again, this board has taught me to never be patient because our patience is exploited. Thus, it makes more sense to make a federal stink right off the bat. Thanks for the valuable lesson. The fact remains that Mr. Schlegel serves on a board that's inconvenienced people in wheelchairs despite his sincere sentiments. Here, I'm the one with the, who served with the disability network for three years and tried to help people like his father, yet he jumped down my throat. Though I understand why he's upset, his accusation that I've appeared here for 21 years for a cheap thrill was uncalled for, destructive, and false. If he's concerned, why did he not speak up November 26th to be part of the solution rather than perpetuate the inactions of a board that appears to do little for people with disabilities? He's urged to keep his head. The last member who routinely blurted out frivolous insults was not invited back. Ms. Reynolds offered no response either to accusations that she lied about me. Then there's Mr. Stonehouse, who worked on unrelated matter during two minutes of my November 26th comment. While speaking here is far from a cheap thrill, I admit that it's fun to be right and to have this board tied in knots, but only under the circumstances.
Anyone else desiring to address the commission? Anyone else? Hearing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to comments from the city commission, and Mayor Protem Reynolds, if you will begin, please.
Couple comments to Mrs. Brum's sidewalk issue. I actually had a resident contact me and actually contact Paul at all, as well as with that issue. I spoke with the city manager. What I gathered from that is it was a misprint. It was a DDA district thing with business owners actually doing, making sure that their sidewalks were cleared. It's not actually, there's no ordinance that says that you have to clear your sidewalk in front of your house. Of course, that's a nice thing to do, but it's not anything you're going to get in trouble for or a ticket. And afterwards, if you want to chat about it, we can do it later. But that's what I understand from Mr. Angeli, and if, is that correct, city manager?
Ms. Brum?
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Other, the other things on my mind, oh, just that the next meeting we have is going to be next Monday. We have two back-to-backs. Just a reminder for everyone that wants to come. And my last comment is actually, I agree with Mr. Verto. I want to also see something on marijuana on our agenda very soon. I think it's important that we get ahead of this issue. I think that considering 69% of the population of the city of Marquette voted that they wanted this ballot initiative put forward, I think we have to take a good look at it and make sure that we're being progressive on the issue. Other than that, I have no further comments.
Mr. Schlegel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really excited about the news that we had delivered to us tonight from Veridia Group and from the Duke Life Point system here. I think that this is something that, you know, I'm always a believer in good karma, and I think that if things, if you do things right by people, that good things are going to happen to good people. And this is one of those things that's a good thing that's going to happen to a good community because we're going to look out for our people that are involved in this. And hopefully, we can, we can see a lot of these important topics addressed, maybe even within this, this, this exact development, whether it be senior housing, maybe it's some more moderate housing availabilities and things along those lines. But I think that this is one of those, it's just like it's meant to be. And I'm going to, I'm going to hang my hat on that for now, and I'm going to be very diligent through the process and hope that the rest of us and the entire community will be as responsible with this, this whole process, letting us, letting them know what, what they'd like to see, letting us know if they're, if they're not pleased with the process. I know that that's very easily, easily done, as you just heard. But this is really exciting stuff, and I'm really excited to be part of this process for, for Marquette and for the UP in general. It's really exciting. That's about it. Thank you.
The only comment I wanted to make tonight is that a couple of weeks ago, we had a storm, and I think the city did a great job plowing the streets. A lot of folks were hoping for a snow day on that day. I think it was Monday, December 3rd. Didn't work out because the city was out there getting things cleared, and I appreciate that. I may have the day wrong there, but we did have a different snow day. But still, can't do everything. Anyway, I was happy with that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a tremendous time to be joining the board and to invite the community to be a part of this exciting new process. I'm really looking forward to the challenges to come and the opportunities that we can identify and how to move on them, and the opportunities to develop types, types of housing and a whole variety of housing that maybe doesn't exist here yet, on different ways of meeting people's needs at all stages of their life, so that entire families and generations of families can, can continue to live in Marquette, I think is a tremendous opportunity. And I also just want to say, terrific holiday parade. Thank you, everyone who made that possible. It was a lot of fun. It was a great night. The tree got lit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and he just said he had one job. He did a great job. And looking forward to the other holiday events to come, and see you next Monday.
Guess it's my turn, I guess. All right, I'll give you a break on that one. But I think it's a great, the Veridia Group would do a great job, I think. Everything they've touched, they've just turned to gold. Founders Landing has turned out good. You know, the bunny bread site, I sat for vacant for how many years, and I kept on thinking, what the heck is somebody going to do with that? You know, then you look at this place now with a hotel and all development there, it's just great. So I think what they have planned will just be great. I look forward to just a great, be a long time, but I think they have a great plan, and we'll see what happens. I think with the hospital moving, there's going to be a lot of back and forth. There'll probably be, hospital will open, and probably be a year-long process of back and forth, you know, making everything work. But what gets done, they'll make it work. And I'm just going to go back and forth to public comment, but there's a certain member talks about what I said about Ordo to Ordo. Yes, Ordo is not, there's not really any new development from Ordo to Ordo, really. Yes, there's, the power plant in South Marquette is on the other side of the Ordo, and the power plant at Prescott has been there for a long time, is on the opposite side of the lake. So what I meant was, not really new development on the lakeside of, from part, from Ordo to Ordo. Really, there's no really, no, I mean, everybody's complained about, you know, Founders Landing buildings, the new building of, you know, at the end of Founders Landing, all that stuff, which all, you can say whatever you want, but it's just happening. It's all been scheduled development. It is what it is. And I think all those buildings along between Ordo and McCarty's Cove have all been there for a long time. I mean, where the fish houses, that place used to be an old dock, I think, years ago. My parents' boat house has been there for, I'm 40 years old, been there for 50-plus years. And the old sailing club has been there for a long time, too. It's all stuff that's beneficial to the community. And Madison Park, where I grew up, was just a big coal yard, you know, coal dust everywhere. My dad was a helicopter pilot back in the day, gave a Santa right there one time, and just coal dust flying everywhere. And there's a railroad yard, used to go all the way through South Marquette, all the way up to Prescott, and back and forth. The bike path is now, used to be a railroad yard, where the old Founders Landing is now, was a railroad yard. I used to go in there all the time when I was a kid. Walked through there, picked pallets up, stuff like that. So it's all, a lot better than what it used to be. Everybody says what they, I agree. Not the best thing for things they want to see, but hey, it's better than what it was, and felt really good. But I don't see anything, I mean, the coast guard station go up because with the coast guard station, with the sailing club, where else can you be but on the water? I mean, you can't really have a coast guard station except for on the water. Have to have a sailing club on the water, and all this stuff that happens, you know. Unfortunately, and I know there's certain persons that like to comment, the people in Ridge Street, I know the people and the, their families have been involved in the community for a long time. And yes, they're well-known, but they also, the Visels run a, run a construction company, they also run a couple, you know, retirement, rental companies. So they do a lot for the community, which is good. And their father and their mom both do a lot for the community, too. So it's good. Yes, they, you make, they may say that they get a pass. That's not true. But they also, they look at what they do for the city and what they do for the community. So everybody, you know, they give them a little leeway, so. And they're doing great, they're, they took down a house that was in bad shape, redoing it, make it look nice, and it looks good. So think what it's done, it's been good and pretty, you know, everybody else owns property in the town and does what they can. So look forward to what they can do.
Well, it's, again, exciting with, to see the reuse of the new hospital property, of the old hospital property. You couldn't have a finer development group than Veridia. And that's been the big question for the last couple of years in the community, is what's going to happen there. So we have the answer. Was it Monday? No, yes, or Friday it was, thank you. So should settle a lot of questions there. A gentleman had a question on the Brownfield. I assume the city manager will have some time either now or manager's hours, or it's, he will address it for you. And as did Commissioner Smith, I want to give a show of appreciation to our public works. There was like, I think, two snowstorms last week, and I was up Sunday at 8 o'clock driving, and you know, my streets were just plowed. I mean, if you've ever lived downstate or other communities, that doesn't happen. We are very fortunate. You take it for granted when it's plowed all the time. So, you know, I mean, they're not going to get every single little side street, but your main and secondary roads are plowed. So they do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just wrap up a couple of things, if I can, to talk to Mr. Miller's question on Brownfield. I think that's too early yet to determine. Certainly, I think that you're going to see Brownfield used in some way. Will encompass the entire project, pieces of the project. I mean, we are a very long way from really having the details that I think we all would like to have. So for the public in general, patience is going to be our watchword as we work our way through the issues that certainly will be here. I would, would point out, you know, concerning marijuana, that I have asked the city manager to set up a work session for the city commission so that we can determine and have at the same time the information that's available concerning marijuana and recreational use thereof by the recent initiative presented to us in a clear and coherent fashion such that we have all of the facts available. And that once we have the facts, we can then move to a agenda item on a, on a conventional commission meeting and really begin to take some action. But until we get the information and the facts and a common understanding of what it is and what will likely happen and what the ramifications are, then, you know, we're just going to be wandering in the bushes, really, with more rumor and innuendo and hopes and dreams than, than hard information. And that's the way I think we need to operate. And as has been stated, I think, by every commissioner, great news on the hospital, great opportunities, and we, again, are going to have a, it is just a pleasure to watch, I think, to watch that project develop. So we're going to have to have some patience for it, but it will, I'm sure, be transformational for all of us. City manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you are correct on the Brownfield situation with the Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you are correct on the Brownfield situation with the old hospital. It's still really too early to tell, but there probably will be a Brownfield component at some phase of this, this development. Just to add another little piece of information to the sidewalk shoveling, we do not enforce any sidewalk ordinance related to residents, except if we plow the sidewalk as a school route or something of that nature, and you happen to shovel your driveway back into that sidewalk, we'll ask you to clear that out. And if you don't, you may be cited. It happens occasionally, but usually with a warning or two, it usually is not a problem. With regard to the East Ridge Street pieces of sidewalk that are missing that Mr. Verdo makes reference to, there is a house remodel occurring, remodeling occurring there. It's under permit. I've been told that until the remodel is complete, the permit is in existence, and the, the construction people have the right to drive over the sidewalk there and complete that construction. As far as I can tell, it has nothing to do with who might be doing the work or who owns the house, but, but there is a permit. And lastly, community office hours will be held this week, this Wednesday, 10 o'clock, at the Peter White Public Library. I have another commitment. I will not be attending that. However, Sean Hobbins, my, one of the people in my office, will be there. And I believe we will, we will be back in the, the last room we were in, the original room. What's that? No, Danny Line Cottage is where we are now. No, no, no. Kabagam, I think it's the Kabagam Room, isn't it? Yeah, across from the bathrooms. Across from the restrooms. Yeah, right. So, I think they moved us back there, so that's all I have. Thank you.